Good evening, community members of the public. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees this February 13th, 2024, as we reconvene back in open session at 7:09 PM. If I may ask Vice President Carrillo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Those of you sitting, please stand. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Vice President Carrillo. Can I ask Senior Lazo to join us in the front and share with our community about our community engagement information? Or Norah Zavayos.
Can you hear me? No. Can you hear me? No. Is the light green?
Yes.
Use your outdoor voice.
If you wish to address a board called 5592763150, or fill out the request form provided on the table near the entrance and submit it to the clerk from the board prior to the meeting. If you wish to speak on an item on the agenda, please do so when the item is called. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you might speak during the public comment section of the agenda. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you might speak during the public comment section of the agenda. If you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, you might speak during the public comment section of the agenda. The district welcomes other language speakers to the board meetings. Anyone planning to attend an meeting, an interpreter for a language other than Spanish, should call 5592744700, extension 10150. By noon on Friday preceding the board meeting, or at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, so arrangements can be made for an interpreter. The district does a welcome into the meeting to the people who speak another language. Anybody who plans to speak another language, call 5592744700. By noon on Friday preceding the board meeting, or at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, so arrangements can be made for an interpreter. The district does a welcome into the meeting to the people who speak another language. Anybody who plans to speak another language, call 5592744700. On Fridays, before the meeting, or before the afternoon, or at least forty-eight hours before the meeting.
Thank you.
Gracias, Senior Zavayos. Next, we get an opportunity, thank you all for being here this evening, to have some of our presentations. I will turn it over to you, Assistant Superintendent Boatwright, about some of our school activities presentations.
Yes, thank you so much. So we're going to start off with our school activities presentations. And first up, we have Ravneet Kaur. She is the Student Body President from Central High School.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. It is my pleasure to be standing in front of you all again for this board meeting. I'm Ravneet Kaur, the Associated Student Body President at Central High School, and today I will be giving an update as to what has been happening at Central High School. Winter Formal, which was a night in New York, was a hit as many students enjoyed their Winter Formal. Many students finished their fall semester smoothly as we have the lowest fail rates and one of the highest GPA rates on campus ever. Forty-six percent of our students had a 3.5 overall GPA or better, twenty-eight percent had a 4.0 overall GPA or higher, and students settled in smoothly in the spring semester. We had many people from Ventura and Fresno City visit our campus to see how our dual enrollment program is succeeding. We had our ROP programs visit all three middle schools to promote Central High School in efforts that the enrollment rate will increase next semester. ROP nursing students participated in clinical hours and received training over winter break. Their next clinical hours will be hosted over spring break. ROP education students have been getting their daily onsite training as they work with teachers and students from our very own Century Unified Elementary sites. Two weeks ago was our Battle Week on campus, which was Underclassmen versus Upperclassmen. Leadership is beginning to plan Chicken Week, which will be hosted the week before going to spring break. Last Thursday, many schools came to Central High School to compete in FFA competitions. Many students on our own campus are moving up the ranks to regional competitions. Our academic team recently earned seventeen medals at the Fresno County Academic Decathlon Competition. Academic Decath league Aldolfo Lopez had the highest medal count at the competition with five golds and two bronze medals. Clubs on campus are thriving, and many students from the CSF Club is very excited to tour UC Santa Barbara at the end of this month, as well as go on the overnight trip to tour UC San Diego and San Diego State. The Spanish club is fundraising for Beautiful Forever Roses, and FCC LA is having the regional competition on the 24th of this month, which is being hosted at Central East Campus, and we hope that you can attend. Our campus is very delighted over all the accomplishments of Mr. Page as Classified and Mrs. Monroe as Admin of the Year, and we truly appreciate all they have to do every day for Central High School. They truly deserve the honors. Also, if you have been by our campus lately, I can assure you that our students are showing their claws and keeping it very clean. That is all that's happening at Central High School, and thank you for listening.
Our next student presentation will be our student representative, Angelina Du Wonky from Pershing Pathway High School.
Good evening, Board President Sing Chan, Members of the Board and Superintendent Davis. My name is Angelina Donkai, and I am the Fresno Pershing FFA Chapter and ASB Secretary. For starters, we have eleven students who have graduated, and FCC counselors have been helping our seniors enroll into their fall school semester. We have a career day coming up in April, and we're starting another year of our veterans program where students will be learning interview techniques, work on writing proper interview questions to ask the veterans, film their experience as a veteran, and the film will be put into the Veterans Museum. Our Oaks Mount Olympus program has come to an end, and to celebrate, the students who were involved in the program explored Cal Poly and talked about their projects to Ocean Oaks Lodge 2504. The Academic Decathlon Program had their students compete in a competition where three of our students won medals. The Fresno Pershing FFA Chapter has done many activities, the latest being the World Ag Expo field trip today, where we got to learn and explore agricultural activities. Our FFA meetings have been successful with our biggest meeting having forty-two members attending out of the sixty-seven members total. That is more than half of our FFA chapter members showing up. Pershing students are looking forward to the activities we have planned for the spring semester.
Thank you, Angelina and Ravneet. And next, we do our student recognition, of course, our peace blossom, and we turn it again to you, Assistant Superintendent Boatwright.
Yes, thank you so much. So first up, we have Mrs. Euridia's fourth grade class from Saroyan Elementary. They're going to perform California Kids.
Miss Euridia, they're gonna face this direction, and I think the camera will pick them up. They good? Okay.
Go.
The desert has its sand dunes where the sun is always bright. And the waters are for the scale animals, and the cacti all provide ouch. The mountains are totally covered with bright white shiny snow. Streams and falls are part of the mountain terrain where gold was fresh found. Eureka! The north coast has the rocky shores where watching is a bore. Foggy mornings cool down frosted windows, and the red was gross so tall. Wow! The southern coast is opposite, surfers align their shorts. Hollywood is the place to make your movies, acting is the main chore. Barbie! The valley is the place where we all choose to live. Agriculture surrounds our main industry, costs are abundant all over town. Corn! The hot sun is great for swimming, and summer sports throughout the year. Golden poppies cover the central valley, blossom trail shows us the way. Achoo! They wish they all could be California kids. They wish they all could be California kids. We are lucky, we are California kids.
And next up, we have... We have Alani Williams, Natalie Negretti Sanchez, and Olivia Arcia, sixth grade, Teague Elementary, and they're going to be performing "Gran Can You Rap" by Jake Ausby.
Hi, my name is Natalie, this is Alani, and this is Olivia, and we are reciting a poem called "Gran Can You Rap" by Jag Ausby. Yo! Gran was in her chair, she was taking a nap, when I tapped her on the shoulder to see if she can rap. Gran, can you rap, can you rap, can you, Gran, and she opened her eyes and said to me, "Man..."
I'm the best rappy gran this world's ever seen, I'm a tip-top slip-slap rap-rap queen.
And she rose from her chair in the corner of the room, and she started to rap with the bin bamboo.
And she rolled her eyes up, and she rode her head around, and when she opened, this is what she said. I'm the best rappy gran this world's ever seen, I'm a nip-nap yip-yap rap-rap queen.
She rapped past my dad, she rapped past my mother, she rapped past me and my little baby brother.
She wrapped up there, she wrapped up there, she wrapped through the door and she wrapped outside.
She's the best rapping gran this world's ever seen, she's a drip-drop trip-trap rap-rap queen.
She wrapped through a garden, she ran down the street, and everybody saw she really talked to me.
She rapped through the traffic lights as it turned red, she wrapped around the corner and this is what she said.
I'm the best rappy gran this world's ever seen, I'm a flip-flop hip-hop rap-
Okay, this is gonna be a really hard act to follow, but I am really excited to be able to recognize some of our VAPA students. And tonight, we focus on secondary music. Teachers and students, when I call your name, could you line up about where that fire extinguisher is and kind of wrap yourselves around? So the first group I want to recognize are students who performed at the Fresno Madera County Honor Band, and that took place on January thirteenth. We're going to start with El Capitan, and I'm not sure if Mr. Orchard, our band director, is here, and also his student Sean Adriano. Are you here this evening? Alrighty, let's move on. Glacier Point, under the direction of Mr. Carl Medina Ortiz. Devon Simmons, if you could please come line up here. I do want to also mention that Devon also performed, he was chosen for All-State Honor Band, and he performed in that as well. Congratulations, Devon. For Rio Vista Middle School, we have Director Chris Golden and student Silas Lovett. Moving on to high schools, Central East Band Director Denny Turner and student Sean Kaufman. Justin Garza High School Band Director Kevin Tinkell, students Justin Ramirez, Hannah Hammack, Andrew Beyani, Riley Henrichson, and Alex Acosta. These students also will be performing in the All-State Concert and Band Festival at Cerritos College on April sixth. So congratulations to all of our Garza students. I'm going to continue adding on, under the direction of Choir Teacher Jeff LaRose, we have Andrea Dolores Dominguez. And she was selected and performed at the California All-State Sacramento Choir on February third. Moving on to Central East High, we have some representatives here this evening. Choir Director Michael Ogden had a prior commitment and was unable to make it, but I do want to bring forward Kayla Morales and Sheila Ramos. And our last ensemble, Justin Garza High School Choir, under the direction of Evelyn Shu, and her students are Leah Offen, Madison Morata, and Alexis Behar. I hope I didn't leave anybody out, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name. I had a difficult name growing up as well. So please come forward, and the board will greet you. Thank you so much.
Next, we turn it to Assistant Superintendent Collegian for Alumni Recognition.
Thank you, President Singh. This evening, we have the pleasure of recognizing Honoree Joellen Priest Misakian from Central Union High School Class of nineteen fifty-six. Joellen truly represents the spirit of the Central Community. Her efforts at Fresno Pacific University contributed to their excellent library teaching program. Through her, the program grew to reach beyond the local area to include online instruction. Many of our teacher librarians were encouraged by Joellen. In addition to this accomplishment, while Joellen was running the library at Lone Star Elementary, she initiated a letter-writing project for her students who petitioned Director Francis Ford Coppola to make The Outsiders movie, because it was their favorite book. The project helped many actors get their first start, including Tom Cruise, Patrick Swayze, Rob Lowe, and Ralph Macchio. In fact, if you watch the last frame of The Outsiders movie, there is a thank you to Joellen Misakian and her Lone Star students. If you visit the Outsider Museum in Oklahoma, you will see the memorabilia that she shares on display. Joellen's positive changes influenced many, and has touched the lives of many students in many ways. She embodies the Central Community. She is Central Strong. Let's give her a large round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I am so honored by this, I can't tell you. I'm gonna try not to cry here, and I have my wonderful friends with me tonight. I can't tell you how much this means to me. I went to Pershing, and we were a three-room schoolhouse, and it was K eight. I graduated with a class of eight people, and went on to Central High and graduated from there, and we had a wonderful experience. We still get together for breakfast once a month, all of the alumni of Fresno, of Central High School. So thank you so much. I wish for all of you that you had friends like I have. Can you imagine coming out on a weeknight for this? Thank you so much.
Thank you again to all of our community members for participating tonight. May I invite up, next we turn to our Employee Association highlights, may I invite up Laura Bolton, our Central Unified Teachers Association President.
Alright, that's a lot for me to follow. Okay, I do have one big thing that I wanted to share that is very positive. Our Liddell Site Rep shared at our last Site Rep Council Meeting that the Liddell Cheer Team brought down the house at the Clovis West Cheer Competition on Saturday, February third. She says, "First, our team was rated a superior score, which earned us a plaque. Next, our team won first place in our division out of eleven teams, which earned a beautiful trophy and team medallions. Then our team won grand champion of all elementary competition teams out of twenty-six teams, which earned us the mega trophy. Our next stop is the USA Nationals on February eighteenth to Anaheim. Go Lions." I also wanted to point out that we have also started to send our kids back to Fresno State for the Peach Blossom this year. It's something that has been asked about over the years, and I'm really excited to see that back and to see our kids get to take their Peach Blossom presentations one step further and get even more recognition, so, and exposure to college campus. It's awesome. So that's what I have, and thank you very much.
Next, may I invite up Angie Gary, our California School Employees Association President? Okay, thank you. Next, our Superintendent and/or Board Communications.
Just a couple of quick things. Thank you, President Singh. We want to congratulate our Justin Garza High School Girls Wrestling, who this weekend won Division Two CIF Section Championship, so we're looking forward to celebrating them. I heard earlier from Ravneet Kar about our, actually, both presenters spoke about our Academic Decathlon, so we'll be celebrating them soon. And last week, we celebrated nine Central East High School Student Athletes who have committed to play their sport in college. That was an incredible experience, that we tried to capture a little bit of it online. And this week, signing day for Justin Garza, they have four student athletes who are going to be signing this week. I do want to make a note that the time of that event, if you are choosing to go, was originally noted in your report in the morning. It's actually at 5:00 PM on Thursday, February fifteenth. I am also pleased to report, last Friday, at our extended cabinet meeting, we were talking about attendance. We are up to almost ninety-four percent, ninety-three point seven percent, moving us back up towards pre-COVID numbers, and our chronic absenteeism is down six percent. Like to give a special shout-out to three schools. Hernan Barso's at ninety-five point two percent, Biola Elementary is at ninety-four point nine percent, and Liddell Elementary is at ninety-four point seven percent. And we look at the raise, I asked Amir to put it into dollar value, it's about one point five million returned for supporting programs. So it's great to have them in school for learning, and then it's great to, in addition, have the funds to put back into the programs that we provide. I also want to remind you, following President's Day holiday on Monday, Tuesday night, we'll sneak up on us, probably just like today did, and we do have our special board workshop here at 6:00 PM focused on facilities. So make sure that's on your calendar as well, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any comments or communication from the board? With that, we open it from, any comments from the public on any items not on the, on tonight's agenda?
We have no comments at this time.
I've received none either.
Thank you. We move to our Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis, or second by Trustee Correa. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Consent Agenda approved, seven-zero. We move on to tonight's action items. Our first involves two cases. Do I have a...
President Singh, if I can interrupt, can, we have separate votes for each case, please.
Absolutely. So for case number twenty-three, twenty-four, zero, zero, five, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve, I'll move to approve the recommended action.
So we have a motion by Trustee Correa.
Second.
We have a second by Trustee Kerfond. Those in favor of supporting the administration recommendation of action on case twenty-three, twenty-four, zero, zero, five, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven-zero. We move on to the second case, case twenty-three, twenty-four, zero, zero, six. Do I have a motion? We have a motion by Trustee Cervantes.
Second.
Second by Trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Those abstaining. Motion carries five-two. We move on to action item number two, accept gifts to the district. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Good evening. The district has received two gifts, one from Central Elementary School for twenty-five-hundred dollars from Central Youth Cal Ripken League for student athlete, and the second one is El Capitan Middle School, hundred dollars from Mountain Alarm for the Pep and Chairs Program. So administration is requesting the board to accept the gifts to the district. The district will be sending thank you letters to all the donors.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis.
Second.
A second by Trustee Correa. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you for the gifts. We move on to item number three, Approve School Facilities Planning Committee, Option Two. Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. This item returns for your review, and in alignment with the subcommittee that did meet during fall semester, we are recommending that you approve Option Two, indicating that boundaries be drawn for Central High School, and that we add athletics and arts to their comprehensive programs, as was consistently expressed as important by committee members, including the students that attended. Before you discuss and decide, there were some questions that came up at the last meeting. We have added some materials, both online, at the back, and also printed copies for you as well, so that you would have those in front of you. You will see attached a few different documents, and again, also available online. There's a question about what enrollment projections were, and so we extracted those from the report so that you could have those, and confirmed that the enrollment projections do include future development, as best is available from the state, or excuse me, the city. Following the campus walkthrough that was held between last meeting and this meeting... get to take their Peach Blossom presentations one step further and get even more recognition, so, and exposure to college campus. It's awesome. So, that's what I have and thank you very much.
Next, may I invite up Angie Gary, our California School Employees Association President? Okay, thank you. Next, our superintendent or under Board Communications.
Just a couple of quick things, thank you, President Singh. We want to congratulate our Justin Garza High School Girls Wrestling, who this weekend won Division Two CIF Section Championship. So, we're looking forward to celebrating them. I heard earlier from Ravneet Kar about our, actually, both presenters spoke about our academic decathlon. So, we'll be celebrating them soon. And last week, we celebrated nine Central East High School student athletes who have committed to play their sport in college. That was an incredible experience that we tried to capture a little bit of it online. And this week, signing day for Justin Garza, they have four student athletes who are going to be signing this week. I do want to make a note that the time of that event, if you are choosing to go, was originally noted in your report in the morning. It's actually at 5:00 PM on Thursday, February 15th. I am also pleased to report, last Friday at our extended cabinet meeting, we were talking about attendance. We are up to almost 94%, 93.7% moving us back up towards pre-COVID numbers. And our chronic absenteeism is down 6%. Like to give a special shout out to three schools. Hernan Barso's at 95.2%. Biola Elementary is at 94.9%. And Liddell Elementary is at 94.7%. And we look at the raise, I asked Amir to put it into dollar value. It's about 1.5 million returned for supporting programs. So, it's great to have them in school for learning. And then it's great to, in addition, have the funds to put back into the programs that we provide. I also want to remind you, following President's Day holiday on Monday, Tuesday night will sneak up on us, probably just like today did. And we do have our special board workshop here at 6:00 PM focused on facilities. So, make sure that's on your calendar as well. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any comments or communication from the board? With that, we open it from, any comments from the public on any items not on the, on tonight's agenda?
We have no comments at this time.
I've received none either.
Thank you. We move to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Solis, or second by trustee Correa. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, consent agenda approved, seven zero. We move on to tonight's action items. Our first involves two cases. Do I have a?
President Singh, if I can interrupt, can, we have separate votes for each case, please.
Absolutely. So, for case number 2324005, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve, I'll move to approve the recommended action.
So, we have a motion by trustee Correa.
Second.
We have a second by trustee Kerfond. Those in favor of supporting the administration recommendation of action on case 2324005, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. We move on to the second case, case 2324006. Do I have a motion? We have a motion by trustee Cervantes.
Second.
Second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Those abstaining, motion carries five two. We move on to action item number two, accept gifts to the district. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Good evening. The district has received two gifts. One from Central Elementary School for $2,500 from Central Youth Cal Ripken League for student athlete. And the second one is El Capitan Middle School, $100 from Mountain Alarm for the pep and chairs program. So, administration is requesting the board to accept the gifts to the district. The district will be sending thank you letters to all the donors.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by trustee Solis.
Second.
A second by trustee Correa. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. Thank you for the gifts. We move on to item number three, approve School Facilities Planning Committee, option two, Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. This item returns for your review. And in alignment with the subcommittee that did meet during fall semester, we are recommending that you approve option two, indicating that boundaries be drawn for Central High School and that we add athletics and arts to their comprehensive programs, as was consistently expressed as important by committee members, including the students that attended. Before you discuss and decide, there were some questions that came up at the last meeting. We have added some materials, both online, at the back, and also printed copies for you as well, so that you would have those in front of you. You will see attached a few different documents, and again, also available online. There's a question about what enrollment projections were, and so we extracted those from the report, so that you could have those and confirmed that the enrollment projections do include future development, as best is available from the state, or, excuse me, the city. Following the campus walkthrough that was held between last meeting and this meeting, there were some updates to the budget that is also attached. And then there were some questions about what next steps might be for adding access to programs at all three campuses, and so that is noted as well. There was also some questions at the last meeting about what our history showed, or what some of the work that had already been done in making plans to upgrade Central High School. There's some questions about fume hoods and the repair of the cafeteria or the modernization of that. And so, attached from our facilities director, John pulled together both, some renderings that have been shared at prior meetings. And so, you'll see one page noting some of the renderings that were made available. And then we also pulled the section from the master facility plan that showed the section specifically on what you've been very familiar with on the plans for Central High School. What is different or updated about it are the last section of that master facility plan. The team did go out and analyze progress and made note of any of the parts of the projects, like the HVAC units that had been taken care of outside of the planned project in their master facility plan. I know that you may have other questions beyond that. We want it to be available, should there be questions that we can help in answering before you take action.
Open to questions and comments from the board? Trustee Correa.
Yeah, for purposes of clarity, can administration clarify what action is being recommended the board take today? So, specifically, I want the record and the minutes to reflect the proposed option two, so there's no ambiguity as to the proposed action.
Sure.
Or recommended action, sorry.
The, our, the recommendation is to draw boundaries specific to Central High School, which would mean that our comprehensive high schools campuses would each have a distinct boundary. Central East High School would, Central High School would no longer be a program of choice. It would have boundaries. Intra, inter-district transfer process would be used to access unique programs at campuses. And that, in the drawing of boundaries, that there would be a commitment to add the athletics and arts to the, to allow the students attending Central High School to maintain their own programs and no longer be tethered or tied to Central East to participate in those. Very lengthy, I know that's not the motion, but that is the, the record of the option two components.
I appreciate that. I just, I know that the committee's recommendations and what they identify as an option to include a couple of other items. So, I just wanted to be clear as to what recommendation and potentially what action the board will take. I don't have any other, I don't have any questions, just more comments. I know that a lot of my community members, those that are in my area too, express their concerns with drawing boundaries and forcing students to go to schools that they didn't choose to. I understand, and I hate having to make this decision, but unfortunately, I'm stuck with what we have. And our current allocated, our current boundaries aren't working. And our school of choice is not working. We've all, we're all aware of the challenges Garza's having, the overcrowding. And unlike our neighbors in the Bay and Southern California, our enrollment keeps growing. And until we build more schools and purchase property in more strategic locations, this is what we have to work with. And so, I'm, as much as it struggles me to have to make this decision, I will be supporting, so long as we're only making the decision to redraw our boundaries and commit to adding competitive athletics and performing arts. I think a separate discussion following our facilities planning needs to be had as to what upgrades. The campus needs a lot of work, just as many of our other facilities. And so, we need to be cognizant of how we're allocating and that we stay up to date, making sure that those facilities are in a decent condition and eventually, the best condition possible for our students to learn.
Trustee Kerfond and trustee Millie.
Thank you, President Singh. I have some clarifying questions. I just want to get out there for the public. A motion to approve today does not decide what the boundaries look like. Those have not been drawn up yet, correct?
That is correct.
And there will be a, still is going to be a months-long process with community input or community meetings about the boundaries?
Yes, absolutely. And, and there will be an opportunity for you to provide input in that process. And then there will be public announcement of the process and anyone's invitation to get involved from our community and providing input.
And the final boundary lines will be determined by, by whom?
The Board of Trustees would make the final determination, and we would bring and gather the input from the input sessions. We will make a recommendation and, and provide rationale for that recommendation. Ultimately, you'll make that decision.
And any designers of the maps for the district boundaries will also include projection, projected enrollment for the future as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Have you further questions?
Trustee Millie.
Yeah, I just had a quick question on the budget. I saw what we're eligible for, for the state modernization. Is there any ESR funds that we're going to be able to use to offset that, that final number?
Right now, what we're planning to do is, if you look at the option two, to make sure that we have the adequate improvements to get the campus going for the classes. So, that's the first step. After that, we will look into how to get access to that modernization fund. The first step is making sure we make the improvements to get, get the school going, or the classes going, so.
So, yes, ESR funds are being used for some of the items that you see already marked off. HVAC was a good example of that. Getting ahead on some of those pieces, some of the green spaces. Fields and lighting have already been done through the use of ESR funds. So, that puts us ahead. If you recall, a decision was made last year to allow some of those funds to help us get green spaces open for our, our programs to be sharing. And so, that work is done. And then there's also some other grant funds that can help with some of the music program and getting that started as well.
Okay, thank you.
Trustees Sellers and trustee Solis.
Point of clarification here in the budget. There's two pages that say, facility planning, option one, and option one on the backside. Is that a clarification? Okay. On option two says, between the differences here, there's a lunch supervision at Justin Garza High School for $150,000 on option one. And under option two, it's budgeted for zero. Are we not planning on adding staff and faculty under option two?
Well, I think what's happening in option two is once we start doing the boundary and we move the students, we might not need that supervision when we start. The option two is based on boundaries, based on making sure that we have opened the other campus, so that's why.
Okay, so, if I remember or recall, we're not looking at planning on implementing the boundaries until the 25, 26 school year?
Yes, that's correct.
So, this next upcoming school year, there won't be any additional staff at Garza?
We will be bringing back a plan based on the recommendation made in December to move to a single lunch before the end of this year and with it, identify any costs that could be incurred. We're working on that right now.
Okay. My next question is, then what is the realistic timeframe that we're going to, is going to take to implement and develop a sports athletics program and upgrade the facilities at West, or, excuse me, Central High School?
So, clarification, there's two big points in that. Being ready to begin with athletics and arts at the school and the campus as it is, is what's identified on the portrait, right, portrait page. The facility planning, option one, the one that you noted is labeled option one and option one. The second one is option two, page two. That is, covers staffing program, all of the facilities that are needed. But you'll notice that we've got phase one and phase two. The team had met and discussed what would need to be there to be started and what could be advancing past that. What was also included in the packet, I want to be clear on, was all sorts of other modernization projects, which are some major building projects. That isn't part of this, it's, it's not all a package. And I think that might be what trustee Correa was asking, or, or, I think when I was answering was clarifying that there is a larger modernization project. The committee said, let's draw boundaries and let's get athletics and arts going at that campus. And when we look at it, there are some things that could be delayed and some things that need to be ready right away. The timeline is to begin those, should the board act, to begin and be ready to open up and have programs for the 25, 26 school year.
Okay, so if we don't have those up and running yet, are we still going to, essentially by drawing boundaries, we're forcing people to go to this campus? And we're making the stance now that these are things that we're going to provide there. If we don't have those in place, are we still going to force people to this campus? And my, again, I'm supporting option one. I think it's beneficial to get these programs up and running and established and see and try, you know, does the student enrollment change at that point? Make the campus more appealing? Do we successfully accomplish that goal? And if not, you know, I'll be the first one to stand up and say I was wrong, admit. But at that point, when we force people to go to that campus, we'll know that these programs are ready to go.
Trustees, I'm sorry, anything else?
Yeah, the last thing I was just going to say is that, you know, I too have had numerous people reach out to me that they do not support this. I look at the, the data that was collected. The majority of the community says they don't support it. And I want to clarify that the 40% or so that say we should draw boundaries, they, this is not, you know, if we had 40% of the district wanting to send their students out to Central High School, we wouldn't be having this discussion. That's 40% of people saying, send them, but not me. So, I want to make sure everybody's reading that appropriately.
Trustees Solis and then trustee Kerfond.
Motion to approve.
President Singh.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, so I will second it, so we can continue with discussion.
Thank you. We have a public comment. I just received notice.
Is there consensus from the board to take the public comment out of order?
Yes.
Okay, here are no objections. We'll take the public comment. And there's only one?
It's BFon, so I have parent.
Okay.
So, parent Jeremy Doty, they're getting pushed through. Hi Jeremy, you're on with the board. You have three minutes to make your comment. Please make sure you turn down your listening device, so we can hear you loud and clear and we don't get any feedback. Again, you have three minutes and your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Jeremy Doty. I'm a parent with a child that attends Hernan Barso. I think that the survey that was conducted that has been placed on the website's agenda that shows 58.4% in vote of option one versus 36.5% in vote of option two, also with what Mr. Sellers just stated about option two and the people that voted for that, is being overlooked by the people in support of option two. I'm very much opposed to this option. I think it's going to force me and several, several other people, hundreds of people into a position of hardship if option two were to be passed and if the boundaries were to be drawn in a certain function. I myself have a house in the easternmost portion of this district and could then potentially be forced to travel to the westernmost high school on a daily basis. And that would be a major hardship for not only me, but for my family, my child that's attending this school, who then would be eventually at some point driving themselves there. For option two to be presented, as it has, and option one being completely overlooked, with the exception of one of the board members bringing up the good points of option one, I think is prejudicial. And there needs to be a much deeper consideration of what the public has stated, what the constituents of this district have said in this survey, rather than just the opinion of the board members. And with that, I will be finished. Thank you.
Any other comments from the trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Board Chair.
So, just trustee Cervantes, let me interrupt really quickly for those that are either in the room or watching. This closes public comment. We have a motion, we have a second. This is board discussion and no further public comment will be taken. Discussion by the board and then a formal vote. Thank you.
I have a question in regards to Ag Building with six classrooms. Currently under DSA, what, what is DSA? Is that design and?
It's a Department of State Architect. So, all the design has to be approved by DSA before we can do anything. So, they are like the police. They, they approve all our, not all, every, every, all the school district designs have been approved by them, DSA.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we have a, we have a motion from trustee Solis and we had a second from trustee Correa. Those in favor, for option two, for the recommended, recommended option two, please say aye.
President Singh, sorry, I just want to make clear when we're referring to option two, that it's what Superintendent Davis identified, which was specifically to redraw boundaries and to add the athletics program. We're not adopting or approving any of the budgetary changes that were recommended initially. Okay.
Correct.
Sorry.
So, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Those abstaining, motion carries six one. We move on to action item number four, approve tentative agreement between Central Unified School District and Schools, California School Employees Association, CSEA, chapter 474. Assistant Superintendent Collegian.
Thank you, President Singh. On January 17th of 2023, a tentative agreement was reached between Central Unified School District and CSEA, chapter 474, in regard to labor negotiations for the existing collective bargaining agreement. The tentative agreement has also been ratified by CSEA members, chapter 474. The new agreement includes a 7.6 increase to the base salary effective July 1st of 2023. Also, health and welfare benefit contributions will be, will be changed from 85% district contribution to 90% effective July 1st of 2024. The agreement is attached for your review. We are recommending approval of this item. Thank you and happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Do you have any comments from the public on this item?
We have no comments at this time.
Discussion of the board?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Cervantes and a, was it second by trustee Sellers?
Yes.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries seven zero. We move on to action item number five, approve tentative agreement between Central Unified School District and Central Unified Teachers Association, chapter 961. Assistant Superintendent Collegian.
Thank you again, trustee Singh and, and board members. On January 10th of 2023, a tentative agreement was reached between Central Unified School District and the Central Unified Teachers Association, chapter 961, in regard to labor negotiations for the existing collective bargaining agreement. The tentative agreement has also been ratified by CUTA members. The new agreement includes a 7% increase to all certificated salary schedules effective 7/1/2023. Also, health and welfare benefit contributions go from 85 to 90% district contribution, which is effective July 1st of 2024. Additional items in the agreement are available for, for your review and the attachment. Administration is recommending approval of this item. Thank you again and happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public?
So, we have one comment from the public, Laura Bolton.
Laura Bolton.
I couldn't get in here earlier, so I kind of forgot to turn in the paper. Okay. So I just wanted to say a few words about, about the process and kind of how it went and to give you a little bit of background information and how we feel about this. So contract negotiations are never fun. Both sides of the table come with a list of changes that they wish to make and both sides are ending up dropping items that are important to them in order to compromise and reach a settlement. And we managed to do that. Some important highlights that we agreed on in this bargain are the 90%, 10% insurance premium split that was mentioned. This is important because we do have a fairly hefty out-of-pocket major medical share costs of, out-of-pocket cost split at 85.15. So having that, that little bit back into our pockets for premium offsets some of that costs as increases go up in healthcare costs for the actual care. The 7% salary increase for all certificated staff helps to offset what inflation has done to increase the cost of basic needs. We agreed to three extra days, one day of prep, two days of district PD, with two hours of planning and implementation time for that professional development, plus a 1.65% compensation for those extra days of work. Comp time has a tendency to cause comp time. As teachers take comp time that they've earned for covering for other teachers when there are no subs, they take a sub day to take their comp day and then sometimes there's no sub for them on that day and that encourages, you know, it just happens, right? Just, it's a never-ending cycle. So to keep teachers in the classroom and still be able to help out when there is no sub, we agreed that comp time will now be comp pay with an option to convert up to five days of that money if people choose to. And this will then reduce the number of subs needed to cover for comp time that's earned, which is good for our kids. We've also continued discussions about some of our very important issues that were left out of this contract. Adding an additional newcomer support teacher is being discussed in staffing meetings. No decision has been made yet, but it definitely feels like we're moving in a positive direction on that topic. The class size and facilities committee is launching soon. This is a contract language that we've had for quite some time, but we have not used it on either side. And so we've decided that we would bring it back. And Cuda has its committee chosen and so now we're getting ready to set dates. So I'm looking forward to that. I really think it's going to be helpful to look at ways that we might be able to reduce class sizes somehow and to analyze facilities and see, see where we might be able to make some improvement there. The Student Behavior and Achievement Committee is also coming together again. This is another piece of contract language that we've had for a long time that hasn't been used. So we're gathering a team together and getting ready to bring that back and I'm almost finished. I believe that this is a good contract agreement. We had 560 members vote and it passed with 81% yes. So Cuda requests that you please approve this contract and we want to thank you as always for being available to meet and talk about our ideas and our concerns. Thank you very much.
Discussion or comments or questions from the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a, a motion by trustee Sellers, a second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. We move on to item number six, adopt resolution 23247, 27, on the issuance and sale of 2024 refunding general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $26 million. Assistant Superintendent Ball.
So staff is asking for approval to start the process to issuance and sales of 2024 refunding general bond obligation in the amount not to exceed 26 million.
Do we have any comments from the public?
No comments from the public at this time.
Questions or comments from the board?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Corio, a second by trustee Sellers. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. Our last item for action items is approved proposal from Southern Bleacher Company Incorporated for the Justin Garza High School Athletics Complex Project. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you, board president, members of the, of the board and Superintendent Davis. For your approval tonight is proposal from Southern Bleachers Company to procure sports bleachers for the Justin Garza Athletics Project. These bleachers are included in the increment two portion of the project that is tentatively scheduled to bid this spring. The proposal is through a nationally recognized by board cooperative, cooperative purchasing contract that is available throughout the United States to public entities. By removing the bleacher product from the project allows the districts some savings by eliminating the middleman on markups of the equipment. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any comments from the public?
No comments from the public at this time.
Comments or discussion from the board?
I just forgot one.
Trustee Sellers?
With the purchase of them, do we have an estimated time to get them and have them installed?
So if we approve it tonight, tomorrow we make the call, I would say about five to, five months because they need to be, go into fabrication. Yeah, about five, five months, like 100 and, I want to say it's 130 days or something like that.
Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you. And can we get the cost one more time on for the bleachers?
It's like 1.4 million, I believe, for, for all, for the total athletics project. I can look that up real quick.
Thank you.
So the total cost is 1,416,520 and your savings is roughly around 287,500. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve and thank you for the cost statement.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Cervantes, a second by trustee Corio. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0. Thank you. We move on to our information items. Our first information item is to receive information regarding revised board policies. Assistant Superintendent Ball, write.
Thank you so much. So we have several board policies to bring to you tonight for information. The first one is board policy 0420.4. This is the charter school authorization. The policy has been updated to reference that until January 1st of 2025, the governing board is prohibited from approving a petition for the establishment of a new charter school offering non-classroom-based instruction. The second board policy is 0420.41. This is the charter school oversight board policy. This policy has been updated to reflect that the governing board may deny a request for an expansion of a program that is unlikely to serve the interests of the entire community. The policy is also updated to include that the district may charge the charter school for the actual cost of supervisory, supervisory oversight. And the policy is updated to reference additional components that must be included and the procedure specified in the charter for when a charter school ceases operation. The next board policy is 0460. This is the local control and accountability board policy. This adds language that says that our long-term English learners are defined as a student who has not attained English language proficiency within seven years. This will now count as a numerically significant subgroup. And in addition, there were all, the policy was also updated to add some headers for clarity purposes. The next board policy is 1312.2. This is regarding complaints concerning instructional materials. This requires that the California Department of Education, that they must develop by Janu, I'm sorry, July 1st of 2025, guidance and public educational materials to ensure that all Californians can access information about educational laws and policies that safeguard the right to an accurate and inclusive curriculum. It also provides that complaints alleging discrimination related to the use or prohibited use of any textbook, instructional material, supplemental instructional material and so on, may be brought under the district's uniform complaint procedure policy. It also requires that CDE by July 1st, 2025, provides guidance regarding how to review instructional materials to ensure that they represent diverse perspectives. And the last one that I have for you tonight is board policy 5145.5. This is a new board policy regarding mental health. The policy reflects new guidance regarding the importance of social connection and the impact of social media on health and well-being. It's also updated to reflect a new law, SB 4, I'm sorry, the new law which went into effect in 2021, which requires CDE to recommend best practices and identify training programs to address student behavioral and mental health. The policy is also updated. It reflects that districts are required to notify students and parents or guardians twice a year about how to access mental health services. It requires each school site serving students in any of grade six through 12 to create a mental health poster.
The next two are board bylaws. 9270 regards new law around conflict of interest and what the amount of a contribution can be and, and parameters around that, including a 12-month following-up date upon becoming a board member's in a proceeding taking place. And the second one is 9321, board bylaw. There are a couple of new laws that take place and in this one, it outlines more specifically procedures for resolving requests for reasonable accommodations, teleconferencing, and acknowledges the sunset of the expiration of the California COVID-19 state of emergency, to name a few of those items. I would also like to note, we did receive a recommendation on board bylaw 0420.41. I've got that one right, correct? Point 41?
I believe it's 0420.4.
Four, that we changed the language where it says an accompanying administrative regulations to actually identify AR and the precise number in that. So we have made note of that change to take place.
Questions or comments from the board on, on the revised board policies? Trustee Cervantes?
In terms of board member conflict, can you help clarify where it says prohibiting that a board member shall abstain from voting on personal matters that are unique and affect the board or board members' relatives?
So I believe it is if a board member or a member of his family stands to gain from a decision made, that you would recuse yourself from the vote. And if it was within a consent agenda item, that you'd be recommended to either pull that item out and vote on it separately or make note of it.
Thank you.
And I would add that the only exception to that rule is if that family member is receiving the same benefits that everyone else is receiving. I think it's in our policy as well. Typically, that involves examples like a collective bargaining agreement. If everyone is getting the same benefit, then you could still approve that.
Is there consensus to move this on to the consent agenda? Thank you. Item number two, receive information regarding comprehensive school safety plans.
Thank you. So I'd like to introduce Cassie Smith. She is our supervisor of campus culture and safety and she's coming up to share information with you on our school site safety plans.
Good evening, President Singh, members of the board and Superintendent Davis. I am bringing for information tonight the school site comprehensive safety plans and emergency procedure documents for your annual review. These documents are maintained electronically and updated on a yearly basis. The law requires that updates and adoptions of the plans are completed by March 1st. In addition to the maintenance and annual update of these documents, our sites review their plan at the beginning of the school year as well as upon returning from winter break and participate in regularly conducted drills and training to ensure preparedness and competency in the event of an emergency. All of our sites follow a monitored drill schedule, performing monthly fire drills, two lockdown drills per semester, and one drop, cover and hold drill per semester. In addition, once a year, every site is required to undergo active shooter training provided, provided by the Fresno County Sheriff's Department. Plans include updated information on the following items. Catapult notification system, anti-bullying awareness strategies and components, multi-tiered systems of support resources utilized by sites in response to student need. SB 10, also known as Melanie's Law, signed into law this school year and focused on opioid prevention and life-saving response procedures. Plans also include a link to our injury, illness and prevention program, which includes our current COVID-19 guidance and procedures. Once the yearly update is complete, the plans are reviewed and approved by each site's school site council and then signed by the site principal and school site council chairperson prior to coming to the board for review and approval. I would like to thank our site administration for completing and communicating the safety plans with their respective staff members. Administration recommends that this item be placed on the February 27th agenda for action. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Smith. Do we have any comments from the public?
We have no comments from the public at this time.
Discussion or comments from the board? Trustee Sellers?
I was just looking for a little more clarification in this portion where you mentioned active shooter preparation put on by the sheriff's department. Can you provide some more, just overview of what that training is?
So once a year, our staff are able to participate in that training, which helps prepare them for run, height, fight procedures that they would follow during an active shooter situation.
And that's hosted by the sheriff's department?
Yes.
At all locations?
Yes.
Even the campuses that are within the city of Fresno?
I can look into that. I know the information I have from Fresno County Sheriff's Department, I'll look into that and get you a solid answer on it.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I could jump in on that one. Trustee Sellers, it's yes, they provide that service in our city schools as well. Every year.
Is there any way that we could invite Fresno PD to participate in that, being that they would be the jurisdiction responding?
They've actually, in many cases, participate in the training and offer subsequent training, smaller groups if need be, for makeup as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
My last question is, have we ever had any third party come in and review our safety plans?
We actually in October had a site safety audit conducted by Donald, Dr. Ronald Stevens. And in part of that review, we visited sites and also reviewed our comprehensive site safety plans as well.
Thank you. Is there a desire to put this on the consent agenda for next time?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Information item number three, receive information regarding Assembly Bill 181, home-to-school transportation reimbursement, transportation plan. Director Bott.
All right. Good evening, Board President Singh, board members and Superintendent Davis. Tonight, administration is bringing our 2024, 2025 transportation plan. Assembly, Assembly Bill 181 was passed in 2023, which allowed school districts to be reimbursed a total of 60% for eligible expenditures. In order to qualify for this reimbursement, Central Unified was required to develop a plan describing offered transportation services for our pupils and for it to be board-approved. Our, an annual update shall be provided each school year by April 1st. Attached is our transportation plan. Our updated plan includes expanding our services using Fresno area express, fax, in order to allow students within two miles of their secondary school site to take advantage of services. Last year, we received a reimbursement of 1.799,268,1,799,268.82 for the 21, 22 school year on June 30th, 2023. For the year 22, 23 school year, we have already received a reimbursement of 989,596. For the year twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we have already received a reimbursement of nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars. We would continue to get reimbursements throughout the rest of this school year for, or rest of this school year for the previous school year. And then administration is recommending the site be placed on the February twenty-seventh board agenda for action. After I answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public?
No comments from the public at this time.
Trustee Corio?
I assume that the Fresno Area Express is public transportation through the city?
Yes.
Okay. Do we, I don't think it's in our plan, but do we have any other procedures to receive feedback from our students or their parents and families as far as the safety and just kind of like other things related to their use of public transportation?
Not for the public transportation, not a formal method. You know, parents do call, community members call, and we try to take feedback that way, but not a formal method.
Okay. I mean, I, up to administration's discretion, but I think it would be in our best interest if we had some process, and then obviously, we can't do anything about it, but then we can contact our representative council members or communicate with the city. I know many years ago, maybe like four or five years ago, when we first had the issue related to public transportation and forcing certain families to use it, there was a lot of concern about the safety and who's accessing public transportation. So I just want to be mindful of those potential issues.
Yeah, we're working with FACS this year with their expanded services. We've been working with them pretty close. We'll be actually bringing something to the board shortly this year with some information. So that's something I can reach out to them about figuring out a method where we can communicate with them. And I can address that also with the, when that item returns.
Thank you.
Trustee Solis?
On your proposed plan, I'm looking at page three, and you're mentioning, I'm assuming you're targeting these grades, grades one through six. Is that correct?
On the, are you looking at where it says?
Second paragraph down.
Yeah, that's language directly from ed code.
Okay, you saw you, you're targeting one through six. Is part of that targeting, you're expecting them to write FACS?
No. The, the, the language is directly from ed code, so the way they stated in ed code, we just re-stated in our transportation plan. So it's not per se what we're doing. It's just what they're asking us to look at, so. Describe, describing transportation services it will offer to pupils and how it will prioritize planned transportation services for people in TK kindergarten and grades one through six, and pupils who are low income. Is that the section you're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
So that's just how we're going to offer services to those subsets. That's, they're asking specific questions about that, not specifically about if it's public transportation.
But then you go down farther. I think it's, let's see, one, one, two, three, four, five. The sixth paragraph down, then you start talking about FACS.
Yeah, so.
Let me cut to the chase. It's not reasonable for you even to bring up one through six, and it's saying that you're expecting them in any way to utilize FACS to get to school. If that's where you're coming from, you're in error. You need to recalculate.
Uh, no, that's not what we're saying. Even when I, in the board, I'll make it clear, it's secondary only, so middle school and high school. There's, FACS won't allow us to be able to, that's not something we can offer.
Okay, and the other question is, you created, you stated in one year, we received over a million dollars rebate from the state for the services that we were providing, correct?
For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year? Yes, one point seven?
Yes. Well, and this is just a statement that then, since we've received this extra money for providing bus services, then perhaps we can expand our bus services now utilizing that funds to cover areas closer to the school site.
Yeah, we received a, we've received a rebate on June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year of that one point eight. We, the district spent a total of six point four million.
Can I interject? I think this is more of a reimbursement for sixty percent of our expense, so.
I understand what you're saying, but if you're the one that wrote this report and that what you're saying is true, why did you not include it in your report? Wouldn't that? Let, let me just make a statement. I'll make it a statement for me. If I know I'm getting an extra a hundred thousand from the state for providing transportation, and then I'm directed by the board to prepare a proposal for how we're going to handle transportation, I would think that I would put in what we did with this money that we received and how much of it went back into transportation, and especially for expanding services, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at our total expenditures year over year.
I'll take that for a yes.
Yeah.
So perhaps you want to recalculate, and when you bring this item back, factor that information into your report?
We can do that.
Thank you.
May I ask a couple clarifying questions?
Yeah.
I understand that this transportation plan is required by law, by the education code, and the education code prescribes the specific items that need to be addressed in the plan.
Correct.
So is it appropriate to incorporate any, any reimbursement funds? Because they're not extra money that we're receiving. We're responsible to pay for transportation. Then the governor and the legislators will sometimes reimburse and change how much that gets reimbursed. Would that be appropriate to include in the logistical data as the estimated and actual? Or what document is appropriate to reflect the specific reimbursement that we've, that we're receiving?
Yeah, it, it is listed under the total revenue, kind of in the middle, where it says the one point seven nine, and then has an estimate for the twenty-two, twenty-three with the actual. So that's kind of what we're expecting for this year to get by the end of two thousand twenty-four. We can change the wording on it. The, the way the transportation plan works, there's kind of a set standard of how it's been put out, so we just kind of use that. We can always change up aspects to provide clarity of what we're spending the money on and how we're spending it and what we're doing with it. The logistical data is that it's exactly what we're spending, broken down by expenses, less capital expenditure and items like that. But if there's a way we can change it to make it more clear, we definitely can do that.
So trustee Solis, where are you requesting that that information be included? Could it just be more clear in the chart?
Yes, I want to know exactly how much of the money that we received from the state, and according to Bill AB one eight one, that was already approved. We're going to continue to receive it for a little while anyway. How we're balancing that, balancing that against the amount we're expending right now and how much is left over from that money? In other words, if they give us a hundred thousand dollars, could we use five hundred thousand dollars of that to expand existing services? Because that money's sitting there. What are we going to use it for? One of the requests the parents have made continually to this board, as well as administrations, is they want us to expand our bus service. So now we have an opportunity, if the funds are there, which I don't know if they're there or not from this. If the funds are there, then we use those funds to fund the expansion of the services, and I mean the yellow school bus services. I don't think we're going to get that big of a bite on the facts, especially only for high school students.
So I think in terms of the question, when we bring the item back, let's just outline maybe on the cover sheet or on a separate document how much we encroach into general fund and what this reimbursement does to that. It isn't money in addition to the budget we use for it. And, and maybe the bulleted list is, is I know you've identified in the state's template, but extract the facts, the, the various things that this money is going to cover.
Yeah.
That will address the question at hand.
We'll return the item under action. Thank you. Oh, sorry, sorry. Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, sir. I raised my hand.
Yes, you did.
I was being, never mind. So we have fifteen hundred, almost fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixteen students of that. Six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one are eligible for the yellow bus, and one thousand, six hundred and eleven are eligible for FACS. Do we know approximately how many students are currently taking advantage of the program through FACS of that sixteen, eleven?
Yeah, as tot, as of this year so far, approximately fifty-four.
Fifty-four. Wow. Okay, so the rest of them are choosing. That kind of is a good indicator for me in terms of how either safe people feel, or how convenient it is, or the time scheduled to catch that bus in order to get here. So obviously, it seems like we need some work there. But, but with that, so, so we basically have less, actually, less than half of our student population that are eligible for any transportation. If I'm reading this correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Based on our board policy, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And it is kind of a mixture of the three, the routes that are available and the timing. Working with FACS, letting them know our needs, we've been trying to let them know where we could use the help with additional stops to make it more beneficial for our students.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies again, Mr. Cervantes. This will return under action. Thank you. Thank you, Director Bott. Item number four, receive information on Justin Garza High School Aquatics Complex change orders for bid packages two, nine, and thirteen. Director Rodriguez?
Thank you, Board President, and Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. For your information tonight, our change orders and the attachment summary for each item for the multi-prime contractor packages on the Justin Garza High School Aquatics Complex for your review. The change orders are changes for work that, that were not included in the original contract scope of work and are necessary to complete the project. If you look at the packet, you will notice that most of these changes are due to errors and omissions by the architect, and I intend to update the board on the, on the status of this in, in April. Staff has reviewed and recommends the approval of this item to return for action on February twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-four board agenda. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from the public?
No comments from the public at this time.
Trustee Corio?
Thank you. So just for clarification, the status update we'll receive in April will be as to the recovery.
So it'll be the, the ones in the, in the past that I, I want to, don't want to, right now, I have them answering the request for information to come in from contractors, so I just want to keep the wheel moving. So we've already notified them, so in April, we'll have a, a better time, a better outlook and bring that back to board.
Thank you.
Trustee Cervantes?
Thank you, Board Chair. I, I just want to make a comment. Seems to be like a reoccurring issue that we continue to have with these in terms of things were overlooked or going back and trying to retrieve revenue that's costing the district and the taxpayers for scope of work that was overlooked.
And I agree with you.
Thank you.
And that, yeah.
Thank you.
Trustee Crifon?
Thank you, President Singh. So these are additional change orders on top of the ones we just approved this school, school year.
Yes, sir. You, you are correct.
So how much, do you know how much the cost was for those previous change orders? Do you have that information with you?
I don't have, I don't have that with me. You mean the, the totality of this project?
Yes, because these change orders would be forty-seven point three thousand dollars. I just want to know how much that is on top of what we've already approved.
I can get that for you. Yeah, I, I don't have that information readily available, but I.
Thank you.
Yeah, the percentage, yeah. If you multiply that, then you would know.
And are we still looking to get these costs reimbursed, since you said that they were mistakes on the architect?
That's what my intent is. One, one hundred percent.
Thank you. Do we have any other ongoing or upcoming projects with this architect?
Yes. And you have a, one other future modernization with him?
All right. I hope we don't see similar change orders in those projects. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Is there a desire for further scrutiny, or would you like to put this on the consent agenda? Thank you, Director Rodriguez. We next turn to advanced planning.
The calendar is attached, and I will send out a note later this week. There's a question about moving the April thirtieth special board work session, so I'll send a couple of dates. That one is, we had identified for the LCAP input and also some conversation on child nutrition, two very different topics, but important to this group. And there's been a request to scoot that up a little bit because of the LCAP timeline. So please watch for an email, and then we'll make adjustments on the April thirtieth date.
Additional information, comments? Our next meeting, our next regular school board meeting will be held here Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, six p.m. for close, seven p.m. for public session. And just a reminder, we will have a special board workshop a week from today, Tuesday, February twentieth, here at the, at the district office. We will be adjourning back to closed session, and then we will reconvene again to the public if we have any additional report. Thank you.